We call the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors business meeting to order Tuesday, January 16, 2018. Pennsylvania County General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition. Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
President.
Mr. Davis?
President.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here. I would ask that you observe a moment of silence with us, please. Thank you. Would you stand with the pledge of allegiance?
United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, be I and to the Senator.
Chairman.
I'd like to add item 13 to tonight's agenda. Authorization of public hearing to amend the Pennsylvania County Code to perpetually change the county's first installment tax levy due date from June 5th to June 20th and the second installment levy due date from December 5th to December 20th.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion before the... Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
President.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. It has been added as item 13. Any other additions to the agenda? Any approval of these?
Chairman.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented in the packet with the addition.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Miller?
President.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We're down to a hearing of the citizens. Ladies and gentlemen, when you come forward, excuse me, please state your name and district. We would appreciate if you were speaking into the microphone so your comments can be heard. The hearing of the citizens format is not a question and answer session, but I assure you that the board will be listening to your comments. Each person making comments will have three minutes. When the animal light comes on, you have approximately one minute remaining to speak. I will call you in the order you signed up. And we head number one side up. All right, we will move to consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, why should we approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We have two resolutions to read tonight. Now I'd ask the board to come down front, and we have two of our board members that are going to make those presentations. We'll start with Mr. Blackstock, and then Mr. Farmer will read and make the presentation of the resolution. The board will hear them from our place.
On the northern end of the county, we have a celebrity residing over there that many of us, all of us over there, are very proud of. And I've been knowing him since I had hair and he was a little boy. It's been a long time. He had his family. Been friends for generations. But Daniel Lanier, would you come forward? You certainly welcome bringing your lovely wife. I know she's an important part of your life and your business. Daniel has been recently, has recently won the 2017 State Champion Auctioneer. And if you've ever, if you've ever go to something that he auctions, I've sold, he sold cattle for me, and I've gone through a lot of, one of my little hobbies on Saturday is just going to auctions. I love to hear his chant. I used to love to go with my grandfather to the tobacco market and listen to him chant. And I've always been just amazed at how they could do that. Occasionally, I would go home in my bedroom door when I was a kid and close the door and try to do that. Figured out real quick that wasn't my thing. Come on up, Daniel. I'm going to read this resolution. Daniel Lanier, 2017 State Champion Auctioneer, Virginia. At the regularly scheduled business meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors held on January 16, 2017, in the General District Courtroom of Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas Daniel Lanier, co-owner of TruGrit Rodeo Company in Grit, Virginia, is full-time licensed and bonded auctioneer, and whereas Daniel Lanier has been competing periodically in the Virginia Auctioneer Association's state competitions since 2008, once-winning Rookie of the Year. That must have been a long time ago. Whereas in late 2017, Daniel Lanier competed against 15 other auctioneers from around the state where all were judged on five categories, including bid calling technique, clarity, microphone ability, would you hire this auctioneer, and execution of the sale in a live auction scenario. And whereas upon completion of the competition, Daniel Lanier was named 2017 State Champion Auctioneer. Then, be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its congratulations and admiration to Daniel Lanier for winning the title of 2017 State Champion Auctioneer. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Daniel Lanier, given under my hand the 16th day of January 2018. Robert W. Warren, Chairman, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors; David M. Smithman, Clerk, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors.
Ms. Flatt?
You've got to give us some time.
Exactly.
Call us out here.
All right, but again, 10, 10, 10, 13, 13, 30.
Too much.
If you don't want to flash, you'll knock it out on you. Congratulations. Thank you.
I was watching Mr. Mills. He put his hands in his lap.
Come on, you get it.
Three, two, one. Well, that's it.
Thank you.
Very proud of you.
Absolutely.
Not only that, economic development, he's always doing resolutions.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thanks, y'all.
I'd like to present a resolution to Robert Mills, Jr. So, Robert, you're more than welcome to bring up your family, please. Roberts and gentlemen, I got to know this summer and this fall when I was campaigning and running the roads of my district. And, Robert, you probably don't realize this, but I've got some good old Callens gravel mud on my truck. It's been there for a few months now.
It doesn't come off.
It don't. But, so me and my wife have a joke. When it rains, it soaks into the driveway. We'll always remember the day you and I rode some of those back roads. So, I'd like to read this. And this resolution was adopted in October, but due to scheduling conflicts, we're just now getting around to having you here with us. So, at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors held on October 17, 2017, in the District Courtroom of Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Robert Mills, Jr. is a Pennsylvania County resident and owner of Briarview Farm, a 2,244-acre farming operation based in Callens, Virginia. Robert and his wife Cindy are proud parents of two sons, Logan and Holden Mills, both accomplished in agriculture and actively involved in the farming business. And whereas on July 31, 2017, Robert Mills, Jr. was named the Sunbelt Expo Virginia Farmer of the Year. He was nominated by Stephen Barks, Pennsylvania County Agricultural and Natural Resource Extension Agent with the Virginia Cooperative Extension. Winning the Virginia Farmer of the Year Award, entered Mr. Mills into a competition with nine other highly qualified state finalists across the southeastern United States. Whereas, Robert Mills, Jr. is a first-generation farmer who has been successfully farming for 19 years. Crops produced include conventional and organic fluid-cured tobacco, dark fire tobacco, and bioenergy tobacco, along with winter wheat. He also operates a beef cattle and poultry pullet enterprise. On October 17, 2017, at a luncheon with over 1,500 people at the Sunbelt Ag Expo held annually in Montreux, Georgia, Robert Mills, Jr. was selected as the winner of the Swisher Suites Sunbelt Ag Expo Southeastern Farmer of the Year. Mr. Mills won this prestigious award not only for his farming success, but also for his extensive leadership and community service, and ongoing commitment to the Virginia agricultural industry. This includes recently being elected as a President of the Board of Virginia Agriculture and Consumer Services, and being named to the Virginia Tech Board of Visitors. Then, be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its congratulations and admiration to Robert Mills, Jr. on becoming again the 2017 Swisher Suites Sunbelt Ag Expo Southeastern Farmer of the Year. That's a tongue twister.
It is.
So, be it resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Mills, given under my hand the 17th day of October. Robert W. Warren, Chairman, and David M. Smithman, Clerk, Pennsylvania County.
Would you like to say a few words?
If you don't mind.
I'd love it. You can go right ahead.
I just want to say thanks to the board. And, you know, growing up in Pennsylvania County, being a first-generation farmer, we picked the right place to grow up, we picked the right place to live. And I stood in front of the Board of Supervisors when I was 13 years old for the first time with a blue and gold jacket to talk to you all about the importance of agriculture. And I hope I carried that torch from that point on. And this award, there's been a lot of publication, magazines, and things like that, but I want people to know that this award wasn't about us. It was about all the people that made it happen. When I think about the agricultural teachers, George Nolan, Benny Gwill, James, Jimmy Craddock, and Mr. Regan, whose farm I grew up working on, and the community, we could have picked any community in this county to start our operation, and we picked Callens. And I can't think of a better community to pick. So, this resolution and this award, even though our name is on it, it's about all the people that has made it happen for us, and we played a very, very small role. We live in a great county and a great state, and I can just say thank you to Pennsylvania County for letting us be able to do what we do for a living and be a part of agricultural industry here. Thank you all so much.
Just so you all know, this is the second generation. This one right here, we've already recognized one time for winning a major competition. So, we're doing well. We're moving forward. That's a good dream. Keep us going.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. This is brains.
I take you out to money.
I've seen you, brother.
Okay, we'll move to the public hearing portion of our meeting for rezoning cases. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, we, the Board of Supervisors, have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning not changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, we are responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and regulations be directed to these goals, and that each be consistent with the environment, comprehensive land, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At this time, I will open the public hearing for case number one at 7:16. Jones &amp; Jones, Stan River District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case 1, R-18-001, tapped and surely stoned, petition to rezone, total of 0.57 of an acre. It sits in two parts of the land located on State Road 668, Grit Road, in the Stan River Election District, from B1 Business District Limited and R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B2 Business District General for sales, service, and repair of vehicles. Once the properties are rezoned to B2, and all uses listed under Section 35-365 are permitted to use. The plan commission with no opposition recommended granting petition's request by an eight-zero vote. Staff summary enclosing the board package, and Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Stone is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Stone, do you have anything to add? Thank you. No one signed up, so we're closing the public hearing at 7:18. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have, my sister actually owns part of this property currently, so I'm abstaining from this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, case 1, R-18-001, I'd like to make a motion to rezone from B1 and R1 to B2.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
We'll note that Mr. Blackstock would abstain. So, Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Your property has been rezoned.
I'd like to mention my future brother-in-law, too.
Oh, see out there, too? Oh, okay. He didn't recognize you. He just talked about his sister, didn't he? Thank you all for being here. All right, case number two, Jeanette Marie Herndon Bell. We'll open, no, make your presentation, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Case 2, R-18-002, Jeanette Bell has petition to rezone, a total of 1.47 acres, assisting in two portions of land located on U.S. Highway 41, Franklin Turnpike, in the Westover Election District, from R1 residential multifamily district and RC1 residential combined subdivision district to B2 Business District General for future commercial development. Once the properties are rezoned to B2, then all uses listed under Section 35-365 are permitted to use. The plan commission with no opposition recommended granting petition's request by an eight-zero vote. Staff summary enclosing the board package, and Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Bell is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. We'll open the public hearing at 7:20. Ms. Bell, would you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Thank you. No one signed up, so I close public hearing at 7:21. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to follow the planning commission's recommendation and approve the rezoning case, R-18-002, from residential multifamily district and to RC, and, excuse me, RC-1 residential combined subdivision district to B2 Business District in spite of the property, and I'm pretty sure follows the county's comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis?
Mr. Farmer.
Mr. Farmer, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Any discussion on it? Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item 10, presentations, we don't have one tonight. We're going to carry that forward to February. New business, item 11A, lease revenue bond financing.
The resolution that you have before you to consider tonight is Resolution 2018-01-02, and it's to support the lease revenue bond financing that we're going to do through our industrial development authority. And this lease revenue is going to finance two series of lease revenue bonds. It would be Series 2018A, and they're tax-exempt bonds that will be used for solid waste improvements for the purchase of a library in their current area and the purchase of a trailer for our courthouse building. We also have to consider supporting Series 2018B with the same resolution, and they will be taxable bonds. And that would be used to purchase a building in the Ringgold community for the use for economic development. So, these are the two series of bonds that you all will be considering in adopting this resolution. I would like to add that we did discuss with Chris Colt this afternoon from Hunt &amp; Williams, the need, we originally had said that we were going to use the money to make acquisition and installation of landfill equipment, and we need to change that verbiage to say solid waste improvements so we can cover other things, not just for landfill equipment. And that won't limit us in any kind of way.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm, sir.
I move that we approve Resolution 2018-01-02 with the changes as per Miss Vanderheide and the finance committee recommended. Does that go cover it, Batson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For the lease revenue bond financing and authorize a county administrator to sign all necessary documents associated with the bank closure.
I'm, sir. Second. Mr. Davis. Blackstock, Mr. Blackstock made the motion, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would say real quickly, though, this is a much-needed necessity that we've got to cover this. I was going to mention that earlier, but we've got to have this in place, so I appreciate your time, Mr. Vanderheide.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item 11B, appropriation of Halloween contribution, Sheriff's Department, Ms. Vanderheide.
Now, since it's an annual appropriation that we request from the Board of Supervisors each year, our sheriff, Mike Taylor, solicits businesses to make donations for this community event that's done each year around the Halloween, and it's to take the place of traditional trick-or-treating. So, this year, they collected a total of $7,090 for this year's event, and those monies just need to be appropriated so that the costs can be covered for this year. And so, those monies will be appropriated to the sheriff's budget and the Halloween contribution line.
Thank you, Ms. Flippin. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board's...
I'm, sir. Mr. Barber.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the sheriff's request for these appropriations. About state and by Ms. Vanderheide.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion? I'd just like to thank the sheriff and his deputies and everything for doing that each year. That is a great event. If you've never been, I would encourage you to go. There's some exciting, exciting children out there, and I'm not sure the adults aren't having more fun than the children, but it is a great event, and it's a good opportunity in a controlled environment for our children to go trick-or-treating, and also, it's a good time for our law enforcement folks to get to interact with them on a different level than they make on a daily basis. So, thank you all to the back. Please let the sheriff know how much we appreciate you all doing that every year. Thank you very much. Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item 11C, tobacco indemnification grant funds appropriation for EnerTate, Ms. Vanderheide.
Yes, we actually received notice of two grant awards for EnerTate Polymer, and it was to help construct an addition to their current facility in Ringgold and to provide 15 jobs to the facility. The total of these two grants, total of $125,000. $75,000 was awarded by the Tobacco Commission, and the other 50 was awarded by the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund. Both of these amounts have to be appropriated by the governing body, and it flows through our books. These funds will not be given to the company unless they meet their performance agreement standards, and they are responsible if they do not meet those standards for paying these funds back to the Tobacco Commission and to the Commonwealth of Virginia. So, we would request that these funds be appropriated. There is no waffle match on our part, so it's just 100% grant funds. So, we would ask that these be appropriated tonight.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. It being in my district, I move the Board of Supervisors appropriate a total of 125,000 to line item 330-4-081500-8223, Fund 330, in the Industrial Development Cyclical, 2017, 2018, question.
Thank you, Mr. Flippin. Second. Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mrs. Scares. Any discussion? I'd just like to say on behalf of the board that we really appreciate EnerTate expanding the operation here. They've been a great partner with the county, and I don't know exactly how many they employ right now, but they've been a great employer and brought some much-needed jobs here, and it's really good to see one of our local companies growing again. So, had a real nice rhythm cutting a few months ago for this expansion, so it's very nice. Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. We're down to item 12, appointments. Tribe County Lake Administration Commission appointments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barber.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint David Smithman, County Administrator, and Lionel Reynolds, citizen representative to the Tribe Lake Administration Commission for a one-year term beginning February 1, 2018, until January 31, 2019.
I'm, sir.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Okay, we'll move along to item 13, matters from work session.
The Finance Committee met today at 4:00. And we have anything that we need to take action on, Mr. Smithman or Mr. Barber?
Yeah, we just need to read the thing I gave you. We need a motion from the board authorizing us to hold a public hearing to change the, potentially, the perpetual tax levy due date for installment one from June 5th to June 20th, and installment two from December 5th to December 20th.
We met today early and discussed this in our work session, along with our treasurer and our commissioner of revenue, I think was also present, but we think this just makes sense to make this recommendation and move authorize or amend the county code for that. I'm going to make a motion that we hold a public hearing, will amend the Pennsylvania County Code to perpetually change the county's first installment tax levy due date from June 5th to June 20th, and the second installment tax levy due date from December 5th to December 20th.
I'm, sir.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does give our citizens a little longer to pay their taxes.
It was all about logistics. It was all about logistics, from receiving funds and crossover from regular monthly billing and payrolls and things like that. Our treasurer made a nice presentation about how unofficial this would be to the Treasury Department, and so we wanted to certainly work with him and everybody we can, so that's why we requested a change of that public hearing. Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes. We're down to board announcements, and we will start on the short side of the line. Mr. Davis.
I would like to mention that I've been putting this off for a while. The short end, I'm a little bit troubled with that. But I'm on a certain committee there in Ringgold, it's the Dan River Business Development Program. I would encourage all the Board Supervisors, because you've got an invitation, to come and see how they're geometrically redesigning the, or re-engineering, rather, the tobacco product, where they're getting five different types of biochemicals and material added that I would think that you would be very interested in coming. And Mr. Ralph Hogg has already made the request that if you guys ever want to set up a meeting to come and view that facility and see the experimentation that's going on, it would be well worth it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Dr. Miller?
No.
Okay. Mr. Blackstock?
Two things. I think, if I remember right, Mr. Linnea, don't you have a rodeo scheduled for the spring?
Yes, sir.
What's the date on that?
So we have the rodeo, the annual rodeo at the Old Dominion Ag Complex, March ninth and tenth, and then where we had our meeting here for the special use permit will be June the fifteenth and sixteenth.
And that's in the grit community?
Yes, sir.
All right. And the second thing I have is...
Announce that, thanks, I'm sure you'll get one camera. We need all of the best...
I can't remember the date. We'll be announcing them again.
Okay.
The second thing is, on a sad note, our mayor here in town, Roy Byrd, Mayor Chavon, recently had a house fire. He lost his wife, Lois. And Roy has been a longtime friend, I'm sure many people here tonight, many of us on this board, and I just ask that you keep Roy and his family in your prayers. I understand Roy's doing something about it, but Roy's had health issues just recently before this come up, and so we need to remember him and his family and have thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, one thing, Friends of NRA are having a banquet, I think first week of March, I believe the sixth. I could be wrong, but it's first week of March, and I hope people will search out people's tickets and raffle tickets for this event. It's a pretty good deal, because all the money we raise stays in the area to support shooting sports and Boy Scouts and all sorts of good stuff, and every year we've been breaking the record on the money raised, and I hope you'll come out and help support us. Thank you.
Mr. Warren?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I know in the December board meeting, you all were able to recognize your counterparts, Mr. Markstall, Mr. Hagman, but I'd like to just publicly thank Mr. Hagman for his six years served the county of Grattan District faithfully. I'd also like to thank my fellow board members and Mr. Chairman, yourself and staff, for welcoming me and helping me get up to speed in a short amount of time to be ready for today's meeting and feel prepared. And then lastly, I'd also like to recognize Eric Economic Developer, Mr. Rowe, and Miss Wolf for all their contributions and efforts towards last week's major announcement in Grattan with Amthor International. That's a huge shot in the arm for our town and our district.
Mr. Warren?
Yes, sir. I'd like to say I've really enjoyed today, the way the board's meshed, and I think I'm really optimistic about being with a great board, and everybody seems to be on the board with it. And this has been one of the most enjoyable meetings I've had in a long time. As Robert kind of touched on, we're honored to sit here and represent people, but people in this county is what makes the county great. If we just do a small bar, if we all work together, the sky's the limit on Pennsylvania County. I'm enjoying it.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. I certainly would have a lot of the same comments. I would like to echo Mr. Blackstock's comments about the Byrd family. Mr. Davis and I did attend the service yesterday. It was a wonderful service, but the family's hurt, and they certainly need your prayers for their loss. Roy continued to struggle with health issues, so please keep in your thoughts and prayers to concern his health and, you know, we just don't all, we never had the answer to why things like that happen. That was mentioned yesterday, but, you know, it was interesting, because after the service, you felt like, I knew Roy pretty well, but I didn't know Lois, but the service really made you feel like you knew Lois, so it, wonderful lady, wonderful lady. So please keep them in your prayers. Also, I want to give a shout out to Fire and Rescue collectively. I had the pleasure to attend the annual awards dinner for the Mount Herman Fire and Rescue within the last week, and it just so happened to be the end of the week, right after they had struck a fire in single-digit degree temperatures that started about three o'clock in the morning. And just to thank those volunteers that are out there from multiple fire departments, servicing our needs, was, it's very comforting to know we have folks that are willing to step up and volunteer for those, and just, they hadn't even completed that, I don't think, Chris, before they had a fatal hit on accident on a forty-one from the same primary fire and rescue department, again with multiple fire and rescue responding there. One was dead on the scene, and they had to airlift the other one out, but those folks didn't complain about having been in eight-degree temperatures for three hours, and they just came right on over and took care of what needed to be taken care of. So I think it's important for us to remember that, and when you see those folks, give them a thank you, because they're there when we really need them, so, and we appreciate them very much. And I echo that sentiment to those groups from this board when we were there, because they've been through that so recently. And I think it was actually, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was actually five different departments that responded to that structure fire, because it was a structure fire that also involved some woods, and it could have been a lot worse than it was had we not had the responders. So I didn't want to get by tonight without saying that. I want to remind the board that we got a board retreat coming up that will be really good, and along the lines of what Mr. Barber said, I am really honored and it's a privilege to serve on this board and to serve you all. And there's people like the two gentlemen, we recognize today that along with all the citizens, they're making a privilege to serve. You all set a high standard for us to strive to, and we'll do everything we can to try to do that. We ask that if you all have any needs, we hate to say it, but complaints, please reach out to us and let us know, because that's what we're here for, is to serve you all. So please don't hesitate to call us at any time. And the last thing, not the last thing, but next to the last thing I want to mention, is I do want to mention Amthor, because that's, again, just like we mentioned earlier with Intertate, that's one of our hometown companies, choosing to stay home, expand their business, and they had an opportunity to go elsewhere and honestly receive more incentives to move, but they chose to stay home, bring us ninety more jobs, and put their international headquarters in Grattan, Virginia, in the industrial park. I jokingly told supervisor Farmer that it couldn't get any better than this to start your career, we're making that kind of announcement right out of the gate, so it really was a privilege to be a part of that. So if you see anyone from the Amthor family, take an opportunity to thank those folks, because they chose to stay here and help us grow this county and help us continue to move forward, and it means a great deal. And lastly, we had our organizational meeting earlier in the month, and we got an opportunity to welcome Mr. Farmer and Dr. Miller, but I will formally do it in our regular meeting. It's going to be a privilege to serve with those two gentlemen. I think they both bring a lot to the board. We will miss, certainly as we said, Mr. Hagman and Mr. Markstall, but, you know, things change, and we got some young, excited folks that have, and some seasoned veterans that have been serving in other capacities for a while, so we're just excited, and we look for the opportunity. And we would also ask that you keep us in your thoughts and prayers, because we give it to start the budget process. It's not going to be any fun, but we'll get through it, and hopefully the citizens will give us their input and help us to work through it, because it's all about making Pennsylvania County better, and that's truly what we want to do. So we thank you for your time and everything, and I'll ask if there's any reports from our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Excuse me, I just want to report that there is inclement weather coming in, and we have delay up in county offices for two hours tomorrow. I assume schools have made a decision, I haven't heard. Court system will also be a two-hour delay.
County attorney?